Okay, call the meeting in order. Those who care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Cameron, if you would.
Let's pray.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and thank you for all that you do for us. Thank you for the rain and Lord, I just pray for this meeting tonight and just give us wisdom and direction. Pray for the elections, Lord, and just the governance and leading our communities, our region, and just be with us tonight in all we do and say in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, move on to citizen participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, citizen participation is closed. Move on to a proclamation for school safety month. We have Republic School Safety Director Scott Umberger here tonight to accept. So I'll read the proclamation and then present it. Whereas Republic schools contain our most precious assets, our children and those who teach them, and whereas the safety of Republic students is a matter of unparalleled importance and significance, and whereas school superintendents, principals, teachers, and school resource officers should be commended on the advances which make our schools safer, and whereas despite these advances, there are still tragedies that demonstrate the need to stay vigilant and aware of dangers on our school campus, and whereas it is imperative that we work together toward making our schools as safe as possible so that students are free to learn, grow, and excel, becoming the citizens and leaders of tomorrow. Now therefore, I Jeff Usry, Mayor of the City of Republic in the State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim August 2018 a school safety month, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of our school resource officers and express appreciation for their commitment to Republic's students. In testimony whereof, I have herein to set my hand and affix the seal of the City of Republic this seventh day of August 2018. Scott Umberger?
Yes, sir. I appreciate it. (laughter)
Good. Thank you very much.[148.19][148.19](applause) Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I need a motion of second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstentions.
Have one abstention. That motion carries seven, zero, with one abstention. Board's Commission Committee schedule of note, city council meetings will be held. The next one is August 21st, 2018, and the one after that will be September 4th, 2018. Planning and zoning does not have a meeting in August, correct?
Correct.
There is a meeting scheduled here, but just of note, there is no meeting in August for planning and zoning. Moving on to old business, I need a motion in a second for the second reading of Bill number 18-34.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brenda.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 18.89 acres from agricultural AG to general commercial C2 owned by Jones Pully Company LLC and located at the 6100 block of West State Highway M, West Republic Road.
Thank you, Brenda. I need a motion in a second for final passage of Bill number 18-34.
Motion.
Have a motion in a second. While we don't always do this on second reads, I thought since we've had so much time between meetings, it was important to have an overview, so Ms. Haynes, if you would, please.
Yes. The reselling application before you tonight is 18.89 acres on West Republic Road, State Highway M. The zoning request changes from agricultural to general commercial. The reselling to general commercial permits land uses expressly permitted within the C2 zoning district. The exhibit for the C2 zoning district and users has been included in your packet this evening. The subject property is not currently served by the city sewer and water. There are plans to extend services in proximity to the site, which will allow the connection to the new city services running directly west of the property. The property is currently served by the agricultural driveway off of State Highway M. The subsequent development of the subject parcel will require review of the new entrances through the commercial development process and commercial driveway in the form of ODOT. The subject property does not contain any areas of special flood hazard area. It does contain several singles which have been identified on our mapping system. There are some regulations and restrictions regarding the development in proximity to singles. The Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend unanimously approval of this application. Staff also recommends approval of the application. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns from council? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Moving on, need a motion in a second for the second reading of Bill number 18-35.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brenda.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Greene County for road striking services.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second for final passage of Bill number 18-35.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Nelson, if you would, please give us a brief overview.
This is in agreement with Greene County Highway Department for them to perform road striking along Main, Allen, Miller, and West Hines shown on the map in green. That would be for Agent Anderson to strike. Staff evaluating these routes for condition of existing striking or lack thereof. Kind of looked at where those routes lie on our overlay map for the next few years. These are probably the top priorities. Overall, the cost to the city will be $2,970 and $0.20.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, comments, or concerns from council?
Only comment would be just great job on this and that. Relatively my expenditure.
Absolutely.
We're very appreciative of their willingness to work with us. I don't know what the weather, but they're looking at starting this week, so hopefully relatively.
A great intergovernmental agreement that saved the citizens a lot of money. Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Okay, I need a motion in a second for the second reading of Bill number 18-36.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brenda.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, amending the budget for fiscal year 2018.
Thank you. Need a motion in a second for final passage of Bill number 18-36.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Ms. Parks?
Basically, we have our second amendment of the year. We went through and evaluated all the budgets where they were to date, and as we discussed at the first reading, basically the directors told us what areas were really adjusted. Some of these things were routine for raising prices. Other things were adapted to incorporate all the developer agreements that we have approved throughout, other items that have been approved throughout the year. Basically, the general fund is increased by $32,933. The water fund is increased by $172,807. The water fund increased $67,604, and the stormwater increased a total of $281,766. We have increased expenditures of the street fund by $438,819, and the park and recreation funds were $28,336. The other thing that we were doing in this ordinance is we are taking the money that had been reserved for the Oakwood Hines project, the $75,000, and we're now releasing that money to be used on the project. So part of this ordinance, section seven, is that this will now be unrestricted funds and will be applied to the project. As I mentioned in the first reading, we incorporate all the entitlement members in this budget as well, and any of the items are outlined in the detail sheet.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Duran?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman?
Aye.
Councilmember Breschers?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Self?
Aye.
Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Parks. Okay, moving on to new business. I need a motion in a second for the first reading of Bill number 18-33.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Brenda.
In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, approving amending the zoning code and official map by changing the classification of approximately 2.25 acres from agricultural AG to medium density single-family residential R1M owned by Marv Rentals LLC and located at 510 South Kansas Avenue.
Thank you. Ms. Haynes.
Good evening. The application for the zoning request before you tonight again is for the 2.25 acres located at 510 South Kansas. This is more generally located north of the intersection of South Kansas Avenue and O'Neill Road. Reselling to the medium density single-family residential or R1M permits land uses expressly permitted within the zoning district. Committed land uses include single-family dwellings, churches, golf courses, inaccessible structures. The full list is included in your packet this evening. The subject property is currently served by Lena School Residential Water and Sanitary Sewer Services to the home on the site. Further development of the property will require the developer to connect to existing water and sanitary services in proximity to the site. The subject property is currently accessible for residential purposes from a residential driveway on South Kansas Avenue. The subsequent development of the parcel will require review of new entrances through the preliminary planning process. The city's future land use map does indicate this area is appropriate for low-density residential development. The low-density residential does include the medium-density single-family residential zoning district at a density of approximately up to 512 acres an acre. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this application last Tuesday, and staff also recommends approval of this application this evening. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or concerns from council? Seeing nothing, remember this is a first read. If you have any questions, please get with Ms. Haynes between now and the August 21st meeting. Thank you very much. Bill number 1837, 18-37, has a request from staff for withdrawal, and Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So every year, the tax levy comes out, we have to receive that information from the county before it can be placed, before council for a vote, and so there's certain timelines that have to be met, and so there's still information that has to be presented from the county for us to get that done, which we were trying to, try to get it, so we have two, it requires two readings, and trying to avoid having two readings in one setting was the objective to get this done, but the county was still unable to provide us this information, so unfortunately, we're going to have to consider two readings at the next meeting to get the tax levy approved, and so I just want to be clear that it was not some delay in the process of getting it to you, it's just we cannot present what we do not have. So it will be presented, but it will unfortunately require two readings at the next meeting, so for approval.
Any questions from council about that?
Did the county indicate what the holdup was?
It's the same, it's the same every year. It's like they get it in late, it's a part of their process of getting their information, and so, you know, one idea that Scott and I discussed, because this is going to be a reoccurring problem every year for the county as well, it's not, I don't believe it's necessarily a breakdown in the process, it's the timing of how that information is received. It may be when we set the agenda or the rules at the beginning of the next calendar year, is that we calendar in the rules to allow our meetings to shift in August to allow a second and third, you know, of the month council agenda versus the first and third Monday of the month, or Tuesday. So we could adjust our rules that will allow two meetings to meet that objective versus two readings in one night. So I think that we can probably accommodate that next year, but we just need to remember when we're setting the rules.
Any other questions? So seeing as this is a staff withdrawal, it is not being tabled, it will just be presented by staff once again without needing to be taken off the table. There are no resolutions. Moving on to reports from staff, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I will start off with Oakwood and Hines. I appreciate the work, Mike, that you did to get the message out. I mean, for the first day, which that was yesterday, I believe, when we started that project, Andrew, I think, I mean, I appreciate the work that went out to get that message out. I've done a number of street projects in my, in my career, and that's probably one of the better days on the first day that you have when you're having traffic interruptions. There are some parts of that, though, that, on the detour signs, that were part of their overall plan that they did not get out, so Andrew's working with them. They're working on some of the side streets for the speeds and things of that, so if you're getting any comments related to those things, we'll continue to work on those. It will be an inconvenience for a while, but I appreciate getting out ahead of it. In front of it, I think that's proved some, a lot of benefits, but we're, we are hearing what the community's saying about the detour signs, and they were, there was a detail sheet that was provided that I don't believe they completely met, and so Andrew's be working with them to get that done. Debbie left before I could commend her, but the software update has been going very good for those of us that are getting to use it, for those that are implementing it. It is a night and day weekend project, and so I know she worked till 10 o'clock last night to get the general ledger out working today. The electronic signatures are done, we rolled out the first payroll last week, and so again, I appreciate the investment by the council to purchase this software, it's making a huge difference. So when she got to see today that it was the general ledger working and seeing that it was going to be much easier to do that, it was kind of like a light at the end of the tunnel, but it's still, there's quite a bit of work to do, and I commend her and all the staff for getting, especially when the payroll was done. I know they were sweating it up until the last five minutes, and, but that, our finance director has gone above and beyond. I cannot speak highly enough of it, and there's going to be a way, some way to acknowledge that and reward that in the future as we move through it, but, so I was trying to get her where she wasn't even here tonight, but, so she's doing a great job, and if you get a chance and you see her, just, just thank her, because she, it's, it's more, there is no 40-hour week for her, I would even suggest it's more like 70. She is going above and beyond to get that done, and there's been a lot of challenges with it because we're working on two systems at the same time. So some of it is slowly, it's almost done, and, but we're having, she's having to enter everything. I bet if I took five of these books, she had to create Excel spreadsheets for every one of those journal entries to input that into Tyler, and so, and when you get three cells that don't match up and you can't find it, that could be nerve-wracking, but I commend her for fighting through it. Sales tax numbers are up year over year, we got our sales tax receipts, I think the last month, year over year for that month alone, was 13% up from year, last year. Our year-to-date is 7.2% up, so hopefully that trend will continue to, we'll continue to see that trend. Been another, a second site visit today with a company that's looking at the Garden Business Park, and so having a second site visit is always an encouraging piece. It is going to, it's most likely going to generate even additional interest, we're having quite a bit of interest out there, and so I've mentioned it before, we'll be working, I've mentioned to Scott that we'll be working on a second development agreement for that site that will build another section of street that will open up an additional, I don't know, six lots, I believe it is, and 20 of those acres are being considered for the development, so hopefully we'll be bringing something for that and bringing some more job opportunities. Hopefully, if it pans out for Republic, but it's probably going to lend itself that we're going to need to build that street sooner rather than later, which also lends itself for us being reimbursed for the first phase of it, because there's two other buildings that are being planned, and those, those construction documents are being drawn up, so that'll reimburse us for the first phase and open up the door for the second phase. Met with representatives from OTC last week, followed that up, we had a great conversation about what that was going to be, they put out their sign that says August of 2020. For those that do not know, there were a number of site deficiencies, water and sewer on that area, water pressure was a problem. Sewer availability, believe it or not, the sewer that's served on that side of town is the lift station that's on Highway 174 up by Meadowview Baptist Church, that's where it has to go to, and so it has capacity issues of that nature. The same concept, if you look at Meadowview Baptist Church in that area on 174, there's a very large area across the road that is unsued, and so part of the overall development, working with the property owner that owns that, there's a lot of interest in that, is for us to partner on a sewer lift station that would help facilitate the growth and development of that, add additional residential housing, so I anticipate you'll see a development agreement coming on that, trying to partner with the landowner if we can come to great terms, but back to OTC, those that, when the initial discussion, at least when I arrived, was the city was going to be paying for all the street water and sewer in that original development, that's simply just, it's not a doable process, and so that was communicated then, and it is, it was again in this last meeting, but still trying to find a way that we can partner on the development some way, be it they buy materials, we install it, do different things like that. So those are the things that are being discussed, maybe deferring the street construction, but hopefully by the next meeting, I'll bring to you a resolution that outlines the discussions that we're having, so we can get that on the table on the front end before, there's a whole lot of things going on, there's no confusion in the deliverable of what that'll look like. So I prefer to put that in a resolution just to say we all know what we're talking about, then I can go back to OTC and say, or at least talking on the same lines of what we can and can't do. Lastly, so today was an interesting day for us, so while we move the meeting, I want to be extremely transparent about it, is anytime there's a concern with the health and safety of an employee or air quality issues with our, with City Hall, or it's determined, we just have to take that safety, and so we, there were some concerns about whether there was issues with the building, so we actually had a third-party contractor come in and take a look at it. I don't want to throw up a bunch of red flags, but I want people to say, what's going on at City Hall? We put out a message that due to unforeseen building maintenance issues, it was concerns about mold in the building or air quality issues, and so taking the precautionary step versus staying in the building, we had a company come in, evaluate it, until those results come back in, we did not want to continue in any fashion until that can be determined. So hopefully by tomorrow, some of that information will come in, and we will make decisions accordingly to that, but the priorities to, to the staff, to the community, and to the workability of the building, and so if there's a concern, we need to address it, we got on it quickly when, when it's there, and I just want to make sure everybody understands what that is, is just that we're just taking a precautionary step, that it's nothing that the consultant or the professional said, hey, there's this big problem, but there were, there were signs of things that would need to be addressed, and to what stage, it was in certain areas of the building, it was on office equipment, on doors, things of that nature, that he was able to identify, but he also did indoor and outdoor air monitoring, so he's going to get those test results, and so based upon that, I don't have a really good answer of what that is, but at the same time, we err on the side of caution, and I believe that we'll continue to do so, and do what we need to do to remediate it or move forward, so other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Just a question, if a citizen has business tomorrow and needs to take care of the City Hall, how cautious?
Excellent, so I, again, I want to commend all the staff, everybody, for setting up this room, getting it, taking care of, we set up a utility billing, it's still able to be done, they were able to set up today across the road at Community Development Office, so you could pay your utility bill. This afternoon wasn't that great, but tomorrow, we'll still be business as usual, we can, we can take care of utility billing payments or any type of that business that takes place. All the phones are transferred across the road, and so someone will still call and get someone at City Hall, and so it'll be business as usual, we just have people scattered at the police station, I believe they're going to be doing some work, we got them in parks, in their conference room, and then in Garrett's area, so, and some at the courts, I believe, so we've got, but I commend the staff, we're moving quickly to keep operations moving where the community can still be served and doing that, it just will be a little bit difficult for a while. That's a great question.
So I want to talk a little bit about growing pains, and, I mean, this kind of brings up part of that point. Anytime we, we see growth like we have been, I think, recently, we're going to have some growing pains, there's no doubt, and not everything's going to go exactly how everybody wants it to go, and so the intersection being closed is one of those things where we, we hear a lot about that, or at least I have, and if, if the road's closed and there's not somebody there working while it's closed, or if the detour signs aren't up, just to explain that, well, there's a method to why we put those detour signs where we do, and we want to make sure that we find that method before we just throw them up. So I appreciate the council, and I'm sure as we go on, the questions will probably increase as the city continues to grow at an even more rapid rate than it is now, and thank all of our partners in growth, the schools, the Chamber of Commerce, everybody who understands those growing pains like we do. So the next thing I want to talk about is with those growing pains, sometimes there's a need to, to try to streamline certain issues and certain things, and I think one of those things, I'd like to propose some legislation about planning and zoning here in the near future regarding several things that could possibly, we've had people that have left, we've had people, and then we don't always have someone to fill it, if we don't have someone, if we were to have two or three people that weren't able to attend a meeting, we've had an applicant that's paid money, and I want to make sure that if they're in that process, they've put some, they've invested some time and money into that process, that we have some alternates or something that can step into place for those planning and zoning meetings and make sure that that applicant's issue is heard. The next thing is the council meetings, they're, you know, I listed the council meetings, when they were going to be, the dates, but I don't know where they're going to be right now, because a lot of that is based on what, what happens with City Hall and what's found out tomorrow. I commend David and everybody for all the hard work that was put into making sure that we got everybody moved out as soon as we knew about a problem, and don't know what the extent of that problem is yet, but not only that, but the city, the citizens of Republic can still do business, they can go over to the Community Development Building with water billing, and so we shouldn't skip a beat, and that speaks to our staff, that they can just, they're very adaptable, they can pick up and move and still get their job done, so we're very lucky in that aspect. So I'll move on to council reports. Mr. Breschers?
Citizen, city-related, school just about getting ready to start, and today, we had a student information day, and myself, I know the teacher, we're stationed luckily at the front door, and we welcomed, provided 1,000 kids from grades 10 through 12, along with about 600 or 700 parents, and as you see the kids come in, as you visit with them and you visit with the parents, just like in life, you see all types of people. We're really, our students and our thoughts and our prayers, as they face a whole different ballgame than sports like we faced when we went to school. A lot of times, it looks like they have a lot, and they have a lot, there's a lot around them, but again, what the problem they face, it's so different and unimaginable compared to what we had, so just to consider that, keep in the thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jones?
To tag along, Charlie, I've had, the first week of school is always crazy with traffic, because parents want to take their kids before they get on the bus, get them to school first, so that's always kind of crazy, so just reminding people to be patient, it'll be organized chaos for a while, but the school system watches a great job. And just a reminder, with kids at school, buses, bus stops and everything, I'll go as well, that always is a concern.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wilson?
Well, tonight, I really don't have a video.
All right.
Leave it to everybody else.
Okay. Mr. Self?
I echo everybody else, or Mr. Cameron, or Mayor, Mr. Breschers, Councilmember Breschers and Jones, but also, our meeting last week, just want to say thank you to Garrett again for putting on such a good meeting and a well-informed with OTO and ODOT, and having those players in the same room and everybody getting together and trying to keep this floor, this is kind of our treasure here, to make sure we keep it a good pathway into a street building and back down on that, so I thought that was really worrying, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Franklin?
Just to echo Mr. Self, thank you, Mr. Tyson, for the meeting we had last week, thank you for all the city staff and all the organizations that came, just kind of echoing again, you you know, very important, so I appreciate the insight into some of the information. It's great to see things moving forward, especially with the Oakwood and Hines intersection, just like everybody else, I know all about it now, what's going on, and heard about it from several people, but progress is promised, so that's, that's excellent to have that going on. Thank you, Mr. Landis and Mr. Nelson, for the video you had on Facebook, that's a great video, does a good explanation, kind of pans us through. But, super proud of our Republic Police Department and a story I've heard of Officer Rogers, and a very good deed that he did with one of our residents that had an incident happen to him, but very thankful for, for his good deed. And thank you to everyone who got out and voted today, really appreciate that, and excited to see what's in our future. Thank you.
Mr. Ann?
It's just a lot of echoing, but also, at the school, it's super important for everybody to be very patient and watch out for all those littles. Garrett, you did an amazing job with our workshop, but also with the chamber today. If you guys ever have the time to attend a chamber meeting, you should, but he killed it today. He just made everything known for everybody, and even when he forgot one little part, he got back in there and, and got it, and let everybody know what was going on, and it was awesome. So, it was really nice to see the city represented in that today, so I appreciate that.
Had to point that out, even when he forgot that little part.
It was so funny if you said that, he was like, I forgot, but I've got it, he was awesome.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
I'd like to stick with the school thing. I don't know what it's like in your homes, but my little boy's been talking about the football field that's opening up nonstop, and there's an open football field on Thursday night that he has circled exclamation points on. So, I believe it's from five to eight, I think, and we're excited to go out there, and we're excited to see the, the new football field. We've already driven by it four times, so, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dykman?
Well, back to what Mr. Cameron was saying in regards to the work that Debbie and her team has done, I was convincing Debbie earlier in the week, and she was telling me, you know, about all they've been doing and how they were explaining it, and one of the things that shows that it's going to be much better for us in the future, is she had one report that they had printed several times out of the old system, and when they went to convert it and bring it into Tyler, the numbers didn't match, I couldn't figure out why. Finally, they added up the numbers that was on the old software's report, and the total wasn't correct. The old software wasn't even totaling the numbers correct.